Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioner meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Tomlin.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greata.
Here.
Chairperson Bowman.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? Any none, motion for approval?
I vote for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five minutes previous meeting.
Chairman, I vote to approve and file the minutes of the May 17th, 2018 meeting, Commissioner Lee, and the June 7th, 2018 Standing Committee meeting.
Support.
Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, proclamation. Item A, the proclamation recognizing Barbara Schultz.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve proclamation recognizing Barbara Schultz 32 years of service as the township assessor.
Support.
If I'm not mistaken, you're going to take this to the building.
I'll carry with me, and I will. Two seconds. It's not like.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item B, proclamation recognizing Bob McCoy.
This time, I'd like to approve proclamation recognizing Bob McCoy's years of service for Iver Township.
Support.
Once again, we'll get somebody to get that to him. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, the proclamation recognizing Hannah Schultz. I think, is Hannah here?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to put you on the spot. I would make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Hannah Schultz's acceptance to the FEMA Youth Preparedness Council.
Support.
Uh, Mr. McConnell, you want to go up there and present that to her, please? We'll get you up there, Hannah, get you on TV.
Claim the thing. This and a quarter. We'll have you in a quarter. Just these signatures. This is a good, great honor for you. This is a proclamation recognizing Hannah Schultz's acceptance to the FEMA Youth Preparedness Council. Whereas Hannah has been chosen as a member of FEMA Youth Preparedness Council, YPC. The YPC was created to bring together youth leaders who are interested in supporting disaster preparedness and making a difference in their communities. Hannah was selected from among a pool of applicants from across the country. FEMA believes that youth play an important role in disaster preparedness and can help their communities be safer and more resilient before, during, and after disasters. And whereas Hannah has been a member of the St. Clair County Youth Readiness Council for two years and has been instrumental in several projects, the St. Clair County Youth Readiness Council is a group of youth, grade seven through 11, who volunteer their time to enhance the safety and preparedness of youth in our county. Her dedication to the council, its projects, and her community are exemplary. She has demonstrated personal leadership and follow-through, but also has the ability to work well with groups towards a goal. And whereas Hannah has grown up in Marine City, she is currently a member of the student government, National Honor Society, mock trial team, the volleyball team at Marine City High School. She is also involved with her church as a youth group member and enjoys mission trips with them. With Youth Readiness Council, she has also participated in numerous public speaking events, including presentations at local events, radio and TV interviews, and being master of ceremonies. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of its citizens, does hereby adopt this proclamation recognizing the honor bestowed upon Hannah by FEMA and congratulates her on her hard work and dedication to the St. Clair County Youth Readiness Council. This is proclaimed this 21st day of June, 2018, and signed by the Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the Consent Agenda, item A, turn.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the approval of the Consent Agenda. These are items that the Commission took up at the earlier meeting this month and consist of the 2018 budget summary, the Superyon software contract, the contract for Microsoft software assurance, the public hearing on the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate, contract approval for EnerTech Incorporated, the application for the Semcog Trails Grant, and the monthly job postings report. So, Chris, support.
Discussion on any of those items. I am going to reference in my report to the Semcog Trails Grant just when it goes up to people. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Our reports of standing in special committees, start going, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update on the Intervention Academy. We approved the budget for next year, probably in the neighborhood of three-quarters of a million dollars. And, but the piece that I wanted to bring to your attention is in the past year, we had 11 more, sorry, 13 more GEDs awarded. There were also three diplomas direct from the schools through the Intervention Academy. And in studying, the tests, the kids come in, they take a test when they leave, they do an exit test, and the average improvement in reading was 3.1 and in math it was 3.2. That's years, so they went from a nine to a 12 or something along those lines. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but they did improve that much just in the time that they were there, so. They're doing an awesome job out there.
Okay, David? Yeah, I guess we took our circle, there was no reward or anything. Is that good?
Just a couple things. One, Carl had sent out an email to us about the article in the Detroit Free Press about Apple's app that they're going to be having, and that's going to allow 911 calls to go through central dispatch and be recognized with the location. It's something that we've always had for landlines, so it makes it much easier for emergency vehicles to respond when they know exactly where they're going and what they're doing, somebody's loss. And they talk in the article about having your central dispatch be available to accept these. Well, then we got an email from Tim Conger, I think it went to everybody, I kind of tried to see what it looked like, but I think you all got it, that just let us know that we've had those capabilities in our dispatch system for a few years, and this is just going to be an add-on. So if Apple does it, the other companies are going to also, it's just going to be something that will help improve locations and safety for everybody involved. And then, I know we just did the proclamation for Hannah. Hannah, congratulations. That's huge. We're very proud of you. Also Jeff, for running this system, you know, Jeff instrumental in setting these up. In emergency management, you're only as good as your leader, and we're very fortunate to have somebody like Jeff. So, thank you. That's it.
Good. Carl?
The only thing that I would add is next week, a week from today actually, will be the Semcog General Assembly. Semcog is the seven-county regional planning organization that we belong to, and twice a year they have a general assembly where all the elected officials are invited to attend if they want to participate in the program. And if anybody's interested in going, I'd be happy to get you more information about it.
Oh, is that that long meeting, almost like four or five hours?
Yes.
Carol gets an award at this meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, where does that fit in? I mean, my doctor doesn't let me go to meetings that long. Where should I be there?
Well, the other interesting part of it is it's going to be held at the new, we'll see there's a ramp. I think that's.
I'm going to be an exception.
I guess to Bell's point, when do you get, because I've got the agenda here in front of me, when do you get, when do you get your award, Carl? Couple of us would like to come see you.
I think it would be at that meeting.
Well, I know that, but.
Sex supply. You don't want to come for the whole program?
No.
I'll find that out.
Find that out.
This is a card that you're getting? Is that like a?
I'm going to touch base a little bit on the Semcog Trails Grant. I actually am the Parks and Rec Chair for Semcog Southeastern Michigan County Governance, okay? There's been a lot of conversations lately as far as the Great Lake, Two Lake Trails, which actually starts over in South Haven, and the ending point would essentially be somewhere in Port Huron, with the ability for the locals to dictate where they would love to do that. You know, there's been a few different things that have been discussed there. The trail has gaps currently that exist today. This Great Lake to Lake Trail ultimately would tie into our Bridge to Bay Trail. We've had meetings with the DNR, we had the Rural Commission facilitate them along with the MDOT representatives, to Community Foundation. There is some other potential funders of this. This is kind of a new thing that's percolating, and you're going to hear a lot more conversations about it. These trails, MDOT will fund up to 80% of the trail route. Truthfully, they know there's going to be a lot more additional requests that are coming, so, you know, for, and you probably could see 60%. Up to roughly a million dollars a year. DNR will put in roughly $300,000 a year. You would ask where that additional match would come from, which is still a substantial amount of money if you think about it. Township has a couple miles worth of the trail. A trail that's connected, it's 300,000, which is a fancy term for a wider shoulder of the road. A non-connected is about 800,000, so you do it with a simple man. If you had to come up with 20 or 30 or 40%, it's a ton of money. This potential partner's looking to bridge that gap for us, okay? So, it wouldn't be, there would be a very minimal amount of money out of pocket for the local units of government. So, one of the things we wanted to do, so it's the Great Lakes to Lake, it would actually come into St. Clair County somewhere, okay? Is it Marysville, is it St. Clair, is it Marine City? You know, it's going to be path of least resistance, they're going to determine that. What I want to do though, to have the people to determine that, I'd like to put a group together. I had some different ideas on some names and some reasons why. And why I want to do that is this trail system is going to take a period of time to build up, okay? This is not, you know, one-year type of thing. This is five, six, seven, eight years. It's going to take substantial amounts of money for a long period of time. What I'd like to do is have a committee put together and really take a look at all the alternatives to determine where the best routes are. And then, so then it keeps the politics out there, and it keeps the, Bill Greitop's jumping up and down, I want it down there, it keeps Jeff Bowman, I want it here. It's just purely based on factual, you know, cross-con, so on and so forth. I've spoke to Kurt Westen, Bill Hazelton, I'm at the Road Commission, Andrea Lefontaine, who's a former rep, actually works for the DNR now. She'd be going to serve rainforest from the foundation. Mark Brochue, who's our Parks and Rec, who oversees our trail system. Dave Struck, who does all, you know, the planning, has to work with that piece of it, then probably find one more person. Because monies, like you said, monies will be coming into this system for a long period of time, and then, you know, some of them are more need, more priorities, so on and so forth. So, really become these people that would make the determining factor on that. I think, you know, as a board, it keeps us out of the political piece of it, right? And then, once you get in there, you will work with the locals, we'll give them all to define your route, those types of things, but it's not going to be a heat who screams loud and gets it before the other guy. So, you're going to be hearing a lot more about this Great Lakes to Lake Trail. We did receive that $48,000 grant, a $4,000 Parks and Rec match with a $4,000 in-kind from Semcog, so $40,000 to help with this plan, to start working on the plan with the Great Lake to Lake, and the bridge to be able to complete this out. Essentially, it'll go to Port Huron. The trail would come in somewhere in St. Clair County, it would go to Port Huron north, and then it would tie back into Baltimore, with a connection actually going through McComb Orchard Trail. If you're familiar with McComb, they have a McComb.
The old Pontiac rail line, I know. Yeah. Yeah. Great, they're. We're stationed there. That's a nice trail. Goes all the way to Pontiac. And that's kind of the, you know, where they're finishing. So they want to connect into that. McComb County was part of the meetings, I've already had spoke with Mark Catco, and they're planning, they actually said some people are planning, they want to look on completing this, or us to. So, a lot more to come on that.
I'd just like to make a comment about it. Last year, at the General Assembly, suggested that Jeff be the Parks Commission for all of, committee for all of Semcog. A lot of that based on our Parks and Rec Commission, it's a test we had. Jeff has been very active.
Okay, that is my report. Citizens wishing to address the board, I don't have cards at this time, but I do have Mayor Dane in here, who wants to say a few words.
Start. Timer doesn't start until I start talking. Start it up. You know, it's, it really is an honor and a privilege for me to welcome you to the city of Marysville this evening. I will say, generally when there's this many people in the room, it amounts to some type of controversies, so I'm calling for you guys for the rest of the night, let you get through it. But, you know, being an elected official, being the mayor of Marysville, and working on so many different projects, not only at the city level, but at the county level, it really speaks to the quality of leadership that we have at the county level. When you leave the county building, you come down, and you spread your message across the entirety of the county, to let you know that you do have a base that you want to touch. And that's really important, I think, for all community leaders to see and to be a part of. We think this is your first stop, right? As it should be. So, we're very happy that you chose to start in the city of Marysville. And, you know, I don't think it can go unsaid, that the progress that we're seeing, whether it's in Fort Grashit, or in K-Pac, or in Algonquin, or Clay Township, or Marysville, or St. Clair, or Marine City, the impact that people are having is what is really making the difference. Our geography has not changed. The St. Clair River maintains the same flow that it's had for hundreds and hundreds of years, but what has changed are the people. And when quality of leadership arises to the occasion, that's when you see that there is clearly a change in the atmosphere, that's when you see progress being made, and that's when you hear a no, a little more faintly than you hear a multitude of yeses. And I just think it's important that that be recognized, that it is the people, and that this county Board of Commissioners is very key in making the wheels of progress churn in the county of St. Clair. And I just wanted to let you know on behalf of my city council, of which Dan Shurkey is here this evening, Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hayman is here, and we do of course have our city clerk and finance director, and our city manager here as well. Thank you so much for coming, and keep up the good work, and we look forward to working with you in the future as well. Was that three minutes?
Two minutes and 37 cents. I got it down.
Thanks again for having us. No unfinished business has come before us, new business. As we go through these, you're going to see that we move through them fairly quickly because they were already discussed at our committee meeting, and they get passed on to the full board. So if you don't hear a lot of conversation, like I said, this is the second time it's been before us. I had a number A, approval of county disbursements for May of 18. This time, I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for May 2018 in the amount of $15,000, $210,071, and 44 cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item B, the contract renewal with Cengage Learning for GAIL courses.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Cengage Learning subscription agreement for a period of June 29th, 2018 through June 28th, 2019, in the amount of $10,194.96.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item C, the proposed revisions to the contract approval policy.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the revisions to the contract approval policy.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, the TEI Consortium Association Appointments.
Chairman Bowman, at this time, I move to appoint Jennifer Posey as a member, representative, and board director to TEI Consortium Association for St. Clair County, and to appoint Carrie Heptine and Geo Gakumbo as alternates.
Support.
Conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, the VoIP telephone service for the library.
I would move to approve the agreements with Seekin Technologies Inc., Intel Peer, for VoIP telephone services for the library system for a term of 60 months in the amount of $87,189.86.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item F, the 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant，则
This time, I'd like to move to approve a，则 1 to the 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant, increasing the agreement by $9,480.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item G, the 2018 Marine Safety Grant Agreement.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2018 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $134,000.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
2019 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Certification Application Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Certification Application and Budget in the amount of $290,500.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item I, Resolution 18-11 Establishing a Commissary Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt that resolution establishing a commissary fund for our deal.
Support.
Conversation. Roll call.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman. Sorry. Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item G, the FBO Contract Renewal with Aviation Express.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the contract renewal for FBO operations with Aviation Express Incorporated for a term of 8/118 through 7/31/23 in the amount of $935,481.40.
Support.
Discussion. I'd just like to make some comments, and we've got Brad in attendance. Been on the board 14 years, when I first got on the board, probably didn't spend my most time, 80% of my time, trying to put all players out of the airport constantly. It was just phone ringing, everybody wanted to kill each other. It wasn't, it wasn't a good place, right? So, we got things squared up on that, and then we looked for an FBO provider. You know, we're kind of fortunate enough to get Brad, and I can tell you my phone doesn't ring anymore than that. If I get phone calls, it's all about the good job that you're doing out there, so I really appreciate that, appreciate that, and keep up the good work.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Don't forget to go some money and support the campaign as well. It's kind of a team.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin. Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item K, the Goodell's Historic Village Building Painting Contract. This time, I'd like to move to approve the painting agreement for Goodell's Park to JB Fetter Painting in the amount of $31,875.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Mr. Greata.
Yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin. Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item M, the landfill restrictive covenant.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the landfill restrictive covenant as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item M, professional service agreement for the city of St. Clair Master Plan Update.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement with the city of St. Clair for their master plan update in an amount not to exceed $11,221.
Support.
Discussion. Is this the same thing that we did with the Riley and Grant Township, rewriting their master plan?
Updates.
They do, yeah. Yeah, they do a fantastic job. And it's really, it comes down to some of the smaller communities and the, you know, financial world, we're able to house these types of things. And for comparison, if you were to get this farmed out in previous towns with supervisor, this could potentially cost $60,000, the update, rather than working with County Affairs, County Inn. What is happening is that?
Mr. Chairman, will we be getting CDs from St. Clair like we got from Riley? All right. Okay, because those are pretty good. Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Greata.
Ah, yes.
Mr. McConnell.
Yes.
Mr. Tomlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Rushing.
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman.
Yes.
Item M, the corrections lieutenant funding request.
I would move that we file the corrections of the lieutenant position at the jail.
Support.
Support? Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Item O, Employment Agreement with the Library Director.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the Library Director Employment Agreement with Allison Arnold for a three-year term expiring 6/27/21.
Strongly support. Okay, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item P, the Health Department Vaccine Storage Unit Purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchase of commercial refrigerators for immunization storage from Homers Scientific in the amount of $20,322.18.
Support? Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
The Health Department Manipulation Change. This time I'd like to move to add a full-time social worker to the Health Department Manipulation. Support? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item R, Parking Lot Repair Seal and Strike.
Mr. Chairman, I have moved to award the agreement for parking lot repairs to A&amp;R Seal Coating in the amount not to exceed $40,465.
Support? Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Item S, the Resolution 18-12 imposing the 2018 Property Text 11.
I would move to adopt Resolution 18-12 imposing the 2018 Property Text.
Support? Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Landfill Component Installation Change Order. We just had our meeting prior to this, myself. Motion. Um.
I'll move approval of.
Tom Mike, listen right here.
Let's get out with it. I thought Jeff was going to make a speech. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Change Order 3 for the Biom Reactor Component Installation Project at the landfill in the amount of $17,990 and thereby increase total contract amount to $703,505.00.
Support? Discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Item 12, Administrator's Report.
All of you should have received an email or an invite from Tammy Ramsey in Human Resources. The actuarial evaluation presentation has been scheduled for July 17 at 9:30 a.m. right after the fire department board meeting. So I encourage everyone to attend if you are able. Kind of on the heels of that, we are wrapping up our annual audit and this is the first year that the county is required to comply with the new public act and reporting requirements for our pension and OPAB liabilities. We have completed the forms even though they have not been submitted yet. And at this time, neither of our plans are going to be flagged as underfunded, so we will not be required to file a compliance or an action plan. Administration is continuing to work with Marine City District Court on their renovation project. A portion of that renovation is due to the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission requirements for constructing private meeting space, but they are also looking at it as a time to go ahead and do some security upgrades that are sorely needed in the building. So, we are hoping that this project will come before you in, if not July, in August for your approval. All departments have submitted their projects to the capital improvement program. There were 35 projects submitted totaling about $25 million. The CIP task force will be meeting at the end of July to hear the departments' presentations and each project will be scored and then the final CIP plan will come before the board in the fall. Lastly, the position for the Animal Control Director was posted last Friday. That position will remain posted and open until it is filled. And next Monday, a public information meeting has been scheduled to discuss animal control and the transition. Our office has received numerous phone calls with questions, meeting requests, so there will be just one public meeting to let everybody know how the transition's happening and what to expect in the timeline going forward.
Any questions for Kerry?
I'd just like to comment that I'm very happy to see that we're in place. It's not just a one-year accomplishment, I think. Our administration and the commissioners, several years, have done a very fine job of keeping our chartered costs in our actuarial.
Okay, any answers for Kerry? All motions on Administrator's Report. Support? All in favor?
Aye.
13, miscellaneous business and miscellaneous business to come before us at this time. We have two items. First thing is, we're going to be hosting a meeting in July in St. Clair, the 19th. Going to try to do it at St. Clair Inn. I'll let you know when we get a little bit closer for, you know, maybe a week out or so. Talked to the owner the other day, he's fine with it. Opportunity to have a meeting and get everybody a tour and then see what their events, drive by there every day when I walk through it sometimes. So, chance to come on down and we'll be able to, you know, run around the place, it's part of the deal. They had an energy summit called What You Made the other day, it was over at. Alzander's? Alzander's, yeah. Pretty, pretty interesting. Some of the things, I know they talked a lot about the alternative energies and you